It's nine o'clock. We'll call today's meeting of the Louisville City Council to order, and we do have a form present. City manager.
Sorry. So council this morning, we're going to begin with a presentation on our sustainability plan. I have Mindy White here. I mentioned some issues related to sustainability plan in relation to the STAR program. She's been hard at work on that, but unfortunately, you know, best laid plans. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mindy.
Good morning, mayor and council. It's good to see you today. Bear with me as I have all these things in my hands. I tend to talk with my hands, so I may be waving the microphone around in a crazy fashion. I'll try not to. So I'm here today to kind of give you an update on our STAR Communities Plan and kind of the direction that we received last spring about using that as our framework for our sustainability plan. So we're going to talk through some things related to that this morning, and then I'll end with a couple of different decision points for you related to sustainability. So as a reminder, last April, we had a workshop on sustainability, and as part of this workshop, we were directed to use STAR Communities as a guide and as a framework for our sustainability goals rather than drafting a formalized sustainability plan. The direction at the time that the primary objective was to use it to gather data and kind of get a baseline of where we were rather than using it to seek certification and get accolades or a plaque on the wall. Instead, we were to use it to kind of inform our best practices and look for some locally appropriate sustainability action points that we could do moving forward. So what does a sustainability, a sustainable community look like? For STAR, they've come up with a series of characteristics that they believe makes a community strong and sustainable. It's a community that thinks and acts systemically. It thinks about all the different facets of an issue. It's a resilient community that's able to weather all different kinds of change in a way that's innovative. It redefines what progress means. It lives within its means in many different aspects. It cultivates collaboration. That's something that we're very good at here, both internally and externally. It's a community that embraces equity and diversity in its leadership and in its community. It inspires leadership at all levels. And then it's continuously improving. It's got a feedback loop where it's looking at, okay, what works? What doesn't work? What can we change moving forward? This is a reminder of the overall framework from the STAR Communities metrics. You'll notice the seven different colored categories along the top. I'm going to introduce some vocabulary to you that I'll be using throughout the presentation, so bear with me as I kind of walk you through that. So these seven colored areas are what are called the goal areas, and these are the seven overarching topics within the STAR framework. Within each one of these separate goal areas, you have objectives, and these objectives are going to be related to that particular overarching area. And then within each one of the individual objectives, you have both outcomes and action steps that can receive points. Were we to be seeking certification, that's how they award the points. The outcomes are going to be worth more points. They're more heavily weighted because their higher impact practices are bigger items. The action steps are smaller things that kind of help move that needle towards that outcome being achieved. I'll go through this a little bit more in depth with some of your backup later in the presentation, so that'll make a little bit more sense as you're looking through the example, but just to kind of give you an example on the front end there. So to bring you in on some things that have happened since the last time we discussed STAR as a group, STAR Communities has since merged with the U.S. Green Building Council. You may be familiar with them because they are the organization that operates the LEED certification program. What happened, STAR had expanded their platform, the tracking software that they used for the cities that were participating, and they found that it required some additional technical support, server space, that they just were not able to afford. They were set up in such a way initially to be very affordable for cities. Their goal was not to make money. It was to create a tracking system of usable data that cities could access easily that would not be a burden on them financially. So they didn't really have the resources to make these upgrades that were necessary in order to move them forward with the STAR 2.0 tracking. The USGBC came in and said, hey, we can help you with that, and worked together with them. But what happened when they worked together and created this merge, rather than having two separate rating systems, they have merged them together into what they're now calling LEED for cities and communities. And that looks very, very different from what STAR looked like initially. The initial STAR platform was very holistic. It had some very specific data points. It was intensive, but it was good data that cities for the past 10 years have found to be very meaningful in directing their efforts and kind of allowing them to look at how they're doing related to peers. And the LEED system so far is not that. It is definitely scaled down. It's taking something that was originally intended to be looking more at a building envelope and trying to broaden that and apply it to a community scope. And just for example, in terms of the data, STAR had over 260 points of data that were collected with it initially. The first draft of the LEED for cities and communities had only 49. So it's significantly different in terms of what it's looking at and how that rating is achieved. There's also some moving pieces with it. They originally said that the draft would be released here in the fall, but that hasn't happened. It's been postponed. They're still taking community feedback from cities and stakeholders. I have some concerns based on how some of those community meetings have gone about how this process is working and if it's something that's feasible for us as a community. So right now, that early 2019 release date is kind of a caveat. There's no guarantees there with all the pushbacks that we've seen so far from them on their release dates. So hopefully, it will come out sometime in 2019. We'll be able to see that finished draft. But early drafts are really kind of missing some of the key pieces that we really loved about the STAR Communities platform. Another thing that's important to mention about the STAR Communities, it is available for tracking and for certification for cities that choose to do so through the end of 2019. So we have through the end of this year to utilize that platform and measure any data that we may wish and use those resources at this time. But after the end of 2019, it completely goes away and completely shifts over to whatever this new iteration looks like through USGBC. So what does that mean for us whenever we previously based our decision on the idea that we could look at the STAR Communities as our platform for our sustainability plan? We have to kind of adjust how we're looking at that now because we no longer have that long-term mechanism to track our data. Even if we weren't going to seek certification, we still had that online platform where we could track our data, see how we were doing over time, and be able to compare ourselves to similar cities. So we're trying to kind of reassess where we're at and do some baseline data collection while we can in the meantime. And that's what we did. We met with a series of functional groups within the city that were made up of primarily directors and some other members of different teams. These functional groups were set up in such a way that either the job functions or the knowledge within that group overlapped. For instance, we had one that was planning, building inspections, and economic development. We had another one that was parks and public services. So there were some commonalities in what they were bringing to the table. And we worked through the entire framework and looked at, what are we doing currently? Are we doing this? Are we not doing this? And it was done in kind of a yes/no basis. We didn't necessarily collect the backup data, which is what we would have done were we seeking certification, but we looked at, yes, Louisville is doing this, or no, we're not doing it yet. And then you'll notice on the second bullet, it says some of the data was not, excuse me, not pursued because it didn't inform our internal efforts. So some of the things that STAR looks at are more community-based data because it's looking at things like livability as a whole. And there's some pieces that, since we were using this to guide our internal efforts as a sustainability plan, weren't really useful for us at this time because we weren't seeking certification to go ahead and pursue. For instance, there's some information related to educational statistics that were we seeking certification, we would have reached out to LISD for. And you'll see that reflected later when we talk about the results that we saw, and I'll kind of talk through where some of those gaps are, where we didn't collect the data because it wasn't relevant to what we were looking for. But I am pleased to say that based on the baseline data that we did collect for our internal efforts, we have, excuse me, roughly enough points that we could very solidly get a three-star certification were we to seek it. And it's likely that we could even get four-star if we pulled in those external pieces of data that weren't collected as part of our internal assessment. This is significant because STAR rates communities for three-star, four-star, and five-star. There's only four five-star communities in the entire U.S. Seattle, let's see, Baltimore, and then two in Massachusetts. And then the number of four-star communities in Texas is also relatively small. Plano, Austin are the two primary ones. And then for three-star communities, we have Houston, San Antonio, Denton, and Corinth. So we would be in pretty good company were we to actually seek that, just to kind of give you a basis of comparison just on how we're doing. Pardon me. So this chart here summarizes what we found whenever we went through those meetings and analyzed the results that we got from the various feedback from directors. You'll see these colors correspond with our overall objective areas. And one thing I want to point out, these aren't all out of 100 points. These are scaled based out of how the STAR creators felt like how heavily that particular category should be weighed. So this one, for instance, built environment, 67.9 out of 100 points, whereas the education, 32.2 out of 70. So keep that in mind as you're looking at these, that it's out of however many points that particular bar is corresponding to. And again, it looks like that we're not achieving well in education, but that's the one I was just talking about a moment ago where we didn't collect that data from LISD because it wasn't relevant to the particular focus of what we were doing right now. Also, on natural systems, that's another one where it looks like, wow, why are we not that high? We do great things with natural systems. You know, we have Lila and all the great things that parks do. Well, that is lower because there's a piece in there that actually has to deal with agriculture and how farmland is managed, and we don't really have a lot of farmland in Louisville that would play into those. I mean, we're the farmers for crying out loud. But that's why that one is a little bit lower as well. So as you look through the particular categories, you'll see things like that that make sense once you see it, like, oh, we don't really do that, or that's not relevant in Texas based on our local laws, things like that. I do want to take a moment at this time to walk you through your backup. There's a significant amount of backup related to this so that you can see the sources of the data. And this is all pulled directly from the STAR website, so it's got all of the information that we entered in as a result of our meetings with the different functional groups. So in your backup, you'll see at the beginning, it says STAR Communities by category, and this is just going to give you a snapshot for each one of those different objectives. It shows how we performed in each area underneath that, so you can kind of see an overall snapshot. And then past that, it's broken up by objective, and it gives you that deeper dive into the data. The very first one is built environment. There's a summary graph just like this one up here for built environment, and it's going to show how we performed in each one of those individual objectives underneath built environment's topical area. And it also gives you a little blurb from STAR on why they feel like that's a relevant category, why it's important, and what we are looking at within that category. If you turn a few pages in, you'll see one that is called BE6, Public Spaces. And I want to walk you through this as an example of how this is working. So you'll see at the top, there's a button for outcomes and a button for actions. The outcomes, again, are the ones that are the bigger, high-impact practices, might be a little bit harder to achieve or really stretch goals for us. So you'll see there's only one out of these four that are checked, and it has to do with the acreage. But then if you turn the page, it breaks down the actions related to that particular objective. And you'll see we're doing quite well on the actions. Almost all of the actions for built environment six have been checked. So it shows that even though if you look at the objectives, it might appear to you at first glance that we're missing some gaps, we're actually not. We're doing some really great things in that category. We just aren't hitting those big level, high-impact areas quite yet. So that's just an example to kind of show you how the platform works. You need a little light reading later this weekend. You can glance through that and look at any areas that are of particular interest to you. And after you do so, I'm happy to answer any questions later on that you may have related to the actual scoring of the metrics. So that being said, what are our next steps forward? Obviously, with the loss of the platform, we have to look at another mechanism to kind of plan and track what we're doing moving forward. Although we don't think at this time that recommending LEED for cities is the right option for us, I definitely believe that in the future, there's going to be something that'll fill that gap and fill that need, whether it's a different iteration of LEED for cities where some of those kinks have been ironed out, or a brand-new platform that someone comes up with. I think that someday, there will be something else that will be an option that will work. Yes, sir.
Is the reason we're not recommending this because the LEED for cities is going to skew more towards the built environment?
Not necessarily. It's a number of different reasons. Part of it is because they are a global platform. They are structuring it in such a way that it's globally applicable, which means that the resolution of the data that we get is not as meaningful because they're measuring things that would equally work in Europe and in America, which aren't necessarily as useful to look at as some of the things that are specific to this area. And there's a lot of, even within the organization, there's a lot of, there's not a common view of where it's headed. And I think with that uncertainty, it's just right now not a good time for it. It's also a very expensive program. If you're familiar with LEED for buildings, it's expensive just by itself. This is a similar kind of layout. They have some really sophisticated software that they use that's, it's really pretty and does some great things, but that comes with a cost. It would be free the first year, but then there's a significant cost each additional year that you choose to participate. So that's another...
It doesn't sound terribly sustainable.
Exactly.
Exactly right.
It's concerning. So I think that it's better to take a wait-and-see approach and see if other cities adopt it and how they do with it first.
And we've never been able to design a building LEED standard. It's just been too expensive.
Yeah. Well, that's why you pay for LEED credits.
Right.
That's, I mean, half the buildings in Dallas have had some sort of cash outlay so that they could offset credits.
Put that little plaque on their wall.
Uh huh.
And I think at the end of the day, we need to look at what's meaningful for us as a community, and I think there's better, more impactful ways we could spend that money than getting behind a brand that may not have good support. Exactly.
Thank you.
Excuse me. So in the meantime, we do feel like it's still important to have a guide forward with sustainability to guide our next steps, to make sure that where we're headed is where we need to be headed and where we want to be headed. And so we are recommending that the city does consider adopting a sustainability plan that would serve as our guide for the next five years, something that would help us decide what do we want to prioritize and how are we going to get there. So you may be asking, what is a sustainability plan? This is something that's going to allow us to establish these goals that are going to foster environmental, financial, and community sustainability. All three of these pieces are essential to having a true, livable, sustainable community, similar to the list that we saw earlier from STAR Communities. And what this is going to do for us is identify specific objectives and action steps based on what would work here, based on our character here, our needs here, how can we find what fits best that moves us forward in a sustainable way? And it's going to guide those priorities as a community so that over the next five years, we have informed, data-driven decision-making that's making sure that what we're doing fits, and it makes sense, and it has an impact on our community in a positive way. So looking at future budget impacts to drafting a sustainability plan, we would be looking at a consultant that would be aiding us with this. They would collect information on benchmarking, on best practices, what have other communities done, how have they drafted their plans, what's been working for them, and incorporating stakeholder input as well. It would likely take about a year to a year and a half to completely do this project. Some things that would definitely play into it would rely on continued funding for sustainability projects currently funded at $20,000, and it would rely on continued funding for the intern part-time position that we currently have in this budget year at $17,788. It would not include any outreach costs, development of collateral, printing, marketing, public meeting facilitation, which Donna mentioned previously, would be dovetailed in with some of what Karen is already doing for the 2040 outreach or the 2035, 2025 update. And it also would not include any potential program implementation costs. So anything that they identified as something that we should undergo, policy development, program development, none of that would be rolled in as well. So I'd like to talk a little bit about the Colorado Energy Group. This is a consultant that we've been working with for an advisory basis. They've helped advise us on some of our projects thus far. George Burmeister is the president. This group was founded in 1997, and they've worked with a number of different national-level groups, very familiar with local government. They're based out of Boulder, but he works primarily out of the Dallas office, and he's very familiar with the metroplex area. He's accessible and easy to work with at any time. Interestingly, he was also involved at the ground level with the initial development of the STAR platform, so he has a very intimate knowledge with that, with how the metrics were developed, with what works for cities and why. So I think he could be very helpful with informing our sustainability plan and looking at what would work here in Louisville and be successful. So one of the very first questions he posed to me the first time we visited, he asked me, what is sustainability in Louisville? And he wanted to know kind of where are we going with it? What's the focus and scope? And the reason he asked that is because we have two different approaches to it currently. We have the action steps that are very clearly laid out through 2025 through big move number nine, and then we have that broader holistic perspective that's offered by the STAR framework. And I'll go into this a little bit more here in a moment. But he wanted to know, how do we feel like these mesh together, or which approach do we feel like that we want to focus on moving forward in sustainability? So from the 2025 plan, it specifically defines sustainability as using these limited resources for our citizens and our businesses so that they have a high quality of life here in Louisville and doing it in such a way that we're able to maintain that same quality moving forward into the future. So how is it addressed in STAR? How is that different? So STAR says that the path to sustainability is different for every community. I think this is very important because what works in Louisville might not work in Plano, might not work in Dallas, might not work in California versus Texas. So it's looking at the characteristics of your community, your needs in your community, and looking at what's most important and priority for that particular place. But all of these places, no matter where they are, they have three things in common when it comes to sustainability approaches. They focus on a healthy environment, a healthy economy, and then the quality of life and well-being of the people that are in your community, both businesspeople and residents. What's interesting about this definition is it talks about how anytime you have overlap between those three, you find some strengths there in what you're doing. It gives you some efficiencies, and it gives you some shared resources. That's something that we're already really great at doing here in Louisville, is kind of having that cross-departmental collaboration, which is exactly what that's talking about. How can you find areas where you're finding that sweet spot where they overlap, kind of like a little Venn diagram almost? And then finally, that last sentence, it talks about, it's an approach that solves your local problems while being innovative about progress, which is crucial. Innovation is a key component of sustainability. It's taking the problems we have and what we're doing and looking at it in a fresh and new way so that we're having a positive outcome that's moving us in a more sustainable So back to our STAR framework here. We talked previously about how we have all these seven categories or seven goal areas. You'll notice that there's some things that we're already doing really well in different parts of the city, but primarily what we have focused on in sustainability has been in these first two categories because our 2025 action steps have focused primarily on resource management, energy conservation, energy savings, water conservation, fuel savings, electrifying our fleet, things like that, that are looking at our direct resources. This piece right here is kind of the broader holistic view of STAR that I was talking about. But you'll also notice that we are still doing some of the things in this second piece. There's some things related to our green space. There's some things related to housing, economy. So you're looking at some of the other big moves there as well that are kind of threaded throughout. So what I think it's important to note that even though we are calling out this first two columns as sustainability through 2025, sustainability is more like a ribbon that's weaving through all of them. We don't necessarily have to have ownership of the particular action or particular project, but looking at it through that lens of sustainability and understanding that it's linked throughout everything that we are doing is really going to be important moving forward. So I have a quick little activity for you here. Not going to make you get up and dance or do the hokey pokey. Anything like that.
I hear this is a bad word.
Unless you really want to. So I wanted to talk a moment about a gentleman named Simon Sinek, and some of you may be familiar with him already. He has a TED Talk that's just fantastic that I highly recommend if you haven't seen it yet, but he's a public speaker. He has some books that he's written, and he has this concept that he talks about where you start with why. And basically, he says that we tend to start with the what and work backwards. For instance, we have a water conservation credit program. That's our what. How did that come to be? How did we implement it? How do we get the applications out? How are we going to fund it? That's our hows. We kind of know our why in the back of our minds, but that's not what's driving that program and what's moving us forward. So starting with why keeps us focused, keeps that direction going, keeps that intent there through the whole process. And then you still have your what and your how, but you're doing it knowing where you're headed and how that piece fits into the whole. So this is where the activity part comes in. What I'd like for council to do, or anybody in the room if you want to participate actually, is if you could take a moment or two and think about what your whys are related to sustainability in Louisville. So knowing what you know about sustainability that we've just talked through and what you came into the room knowing about sustainability, why do you think we should do sustainability in Louisville? So just jot down a couple of words. Nobody's going to see it but you. And just think through that for just a moment, and then we'll talk about it in just a second. Okay, so I just want to take a moment and ask anyone to share. If anyone would like to share what their why was, if there's something that really spoke to you, or... If there's something that really spoke to you, or something that you would like to contribute, I'm just curious kind of what some of the whys were that you came up with in the past couple of minutes. Is there anyone that would like to share?
Efficient use of resources.
Efficient use of resources.
Future availability.
Future availability of resources.
So I think sustainability at the really basic level is the ability to maintain a certain record level. And so for me, sustainability is about building a place that individuals and businesses want to invest in.
Nice, I like that.
Without that investment, we don't keep what we have. And whether that's time, money, whatever that investment is, that to me is why we do sustainability, is about place thinking.
Nice. Did that sound similar to what some of the rest of you had down as well?
The other one you had down?
It was my point.
Yes, it was.
Councilman?
The other one is building for the future, building for the long term, and building buildings like thrive. This will be here for decades and decades. The last ones we built were kind of, we built for the now and not for the future.
That's a great point.
Okay, cheap.
He was trying-
Donna said that, not me.
Okay, so mine, just to share mine. For me, my why is that I feel like we are stewards of the community, both as council members and as staff. And it's our job as stewards, similar to how you said, to manage our resources in a way that makes sense. And those could be many different types of resources. It could be the people in our community, the people in our city. It could be our money, how we're building things moving forward. It could be our water, our park systems. But we don't get a second chance with many of these things. So it's making sure that we make the right choice in a sustainable way on the front end so that we don't have to come back and try to fix it down the line. So that's why I think it's important, so that we get our first chance and we do it right moving forward into the future. Any other? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think it's really interesting when you look at the STAR program and you look at our 2025 Plan, when you look at the broad program of 2025, how many different elements of the 2025 Plan are reflected in your STAR program? Because it is such a broad program and so much broader a context than I think how many of us look at sustainability.
Any other comments on the, what is the why before we move forward?
I just put, building a city for the 21st century.
I like that, because that pulls in that innovative piece that we talked about a moment ago. Okay, well, that being said, brings us to our decision points. The first one, should we move forward with developing a sustainability plan that will help guide our steps forward over the next five years, just like Councilman Jones just said? And then the second one, how do we want to define what that sustainability looks like for the city of Lewisville? Do we want to focus on the 2025 action step, resource management side of things? Do we want to include the broader scope that looks at how sustainability touches many of our other big moves in our other departments, and look at that holistic view of resource management and policy? So those are the two decision points that I bring to you today, keeping in mind everything that we've discussed this morning about the changes in STAR and where we're moving forward so far.
I may have one more question to answer. What was flawed in, from your perspective, what was flawed in STAR?
From my perspective, I think that the leadership did not have enough forward thinking in terms of how they were fiscally funding the program. They had their hearts in the right place and their intentions in the right place. The science was there. Everything was well-vetted from the metric side, but the funding piece wasn't there to support it when it needed to be.
Okay, my question is on the metric side.
On the metric side, I think it's, I think it's very, very solid. There's some pieces of it that I feel like are very stretch objectives, but I think that's important, especially when you're looking at how you want to be able to use it for a wide variety of communities. So for some communities, they may have already achieved some of the more low-hanging fruit ones, and it's good for them to have those stretch objectives to do more. But I think for some of those, maybe that's a little bit far for us in these early baby steps to hit, but I still think that that's a positive. Honestly, I think that just the lack of planning to keep it moving forward was the biggest drawback. In terms of the actual system itself, I think it's solid. It considers so many different aspects of sustainability and different things in the community that play into sustainability, even in ways that we may not traditionally think about, that I think it really, there's a lot of strength to taking that viewpoint and guiding your policy as a community around that.
So here's why I asked the question. From my perspective, I don't think STAR is flawed. I don't think the metric side of STAR is flawed. I agree with, every community is different. So from my perspective, the metric side of STAR, what each city has to do is look at it and say, this is where I weight my STAR, you know, components. This is how I weight them. This is completely attainable. This doesn't apply. I'll never have this. And everything falls somewhere in between. And so the reason I'm making this comment is that you're asking, you know, should we hire a consultant? How should we move? Me, personally, sitting in my house, the first thing I would be doing is taking the STAR metrics and going through each one and saying, how does this apply to my city and what weight do I put on it? What importance do I put on achieving it? What does that give me back? What's the value of it? And that's, that would mean, I don't need a consultant to answer that. I can answer that question myself or with the help of other people. And so I think we have a starting point. I think we have a good metric. But it's, the objective now is to figure out how do we customize that metric to apply to our particular needs.
And I think that's exactly the goal of the consultant, would be to help us tailor that in a way that is applicable with some specific action steps tied to it, similar to how 2025 has the overarching concepts with the steps to hit beyond that. I think that that would be the goal, is having that outside expertise that helps us kind of distill that down into what works best for us with staff's input.
Can I just say, no, built into her budget is $20,000 that she can use on an ongoing basis for this consultant. She's not going to really be asking for any additional.
And I'm not opposed to outside. I mean, somebody who doesn't live here, looking from the outside in, can see things we don't see or make us see things we don't see, and that's a good thing. As far as, and I don't know what the consultant's approach is, but for me, the approach would be to take STAR and then customize it based on how it fits us.
My understanding is this consultant was actually involved in the design of STAR.
Okay.
So he is the expert. Correct, Mindy?
Yes, ma'am.
I noticed he was originally on that committee, so I figured maybe that is his starting point, but if it isn't, that's my two cents.
Can I add something? And I think that's really where we're, that second question she's asking. So how are we going to define sustainability? Is it really that broad STAR model, or is it the more specific 2025 model, where sustainability really is only those first two columns? Because that'll, it sounds like that's what you're saying. You really want it to be that STAR model, more holistic, and so then we can move forward with really weaving that in.
I want it to be that STAR model, more holistic, but there are some of those little boxes that I'm going to say, it doesn't apply, or it achieves little gain for the cost.
Yeah.
And so I'm going to weight that very low. This very much has a huge impact. Cost might be an issue, but the impact is so huge, I'm willing to accept the cost. So it's that weighing of, you know, how, what good does it give me? What does it take to get there?
And so part of that sustainability consultant's job will be to get that input from you. Like, we can start with that STAR model, but then when we come back to council, get touchpoints. We're also going to do that public outreach component as well, so we get input from the community as well. It's wrapping all of that, start with, if we decided to start with a STAR, start with a STAR, but then wrapping in what our community's tailored version of that is.
And again, if you look at this broader definition of sustainability that's in the STAR program, it really goes your 2025 Plan. I was just looking at measures related to the arts. It's broad. To job growth, to every element that's already in your sustainability program, it just informs that plan. And so to move forward with public feedback with those two side by side, I think is really powerful.
Well, and see, I look at 2025 and look at STAR, and I can overlay the two. I don't have, it's not like I have to have both models. I can overlay the two onto each other.
Yes.
They're not two different lists. They're just two different ways of saying.
And I think it's important, too, as if we do undergo this process, to look at things from a regional perspective, too, and where can we plug in to what the overall mobility goals for the metroplex are, or resource management for the metroplex? You know, how are we fitting in those pieces as well? Because we don't want to operate in a silo and miss some opportunities where we can dovetail our goals with other things that are happening. So any other questions or feedback? This is a great conversation.
I'll add one thing. You and I were sort of on the same page with your, so you asked us to write something. The first thing I wrote, and Donna knows I have all these little quotes I used to give employees, is do it once, do it right, then you don't do it again.
Great. So council, what I'm hearing the direction is, is that we will use STAR as our model, and we're going to take that broad definition of sustainability.
Okay. Good job. Thank you.
So mayor and council, next up, it's your part of the program, it's all your program, but this is certainly your presentation's related to the pitch. Mr. Conkey is brattily attired this morning to be your facilitator. I want to go to the beach.
I don't know if I'm off the street today.
So just some retreat history. So James and Claude always actually competed on who could wear the wildest shirts.